August 8th, 2022, 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor?
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Reed is excused.
Right. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Well, we're going to be switching our agenda around a little bit because we were expecting Copper, but Copper is not here yet. So we will do our board appointments and then get back to them. In the meantime, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to board appointments. I am recommending the following board appointments. ADA Compliance Committee. Interim Appointment of Annalise Rennick to the ADA Compliance Committee as Health Medical Field Representative. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 1st, 2024. Helena Housing Authority. Reappointment of Sherri Downing to a second term on the Helena Housing Authority as a Housing Commissioner. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on August 1st, 2027. Pre-releasing screening committee. I know our clerk wanted to say a few words on that.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As an update to your questions you posed at the administrative meeting on the 3rd, I just wanted to do a quick follow-up and let you know that I've been in contact with the facilitator or those that facilitate the pre-release screening committee on behalf of the city's residents. We are going to continue discussions about how we might better produce some governing documents for participation on those committees for your appointments and the participation between the city and the pre-release screening committee. At this time, we'll go ahead and recommend that we move forward with the appointments as they are listed.
Thank you. Pre-release screening committee. I'm recommending appointment of Brian Costigan to a first term on the pre-release screening committee as a community representative. Non-expiring term will begin upon appointment. Appointment of David Nielsen to a first term on the pre-release screening committee as a community representative. Non-expiring term will begin upon appointment. Zoning Commission. Reappointment of David Kim Wilson to a second term on the Helena Zoning Commission. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on September 30th, 2024. Comments, questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to appoint to an interim appointment of Annalise Rennick to the ADA Compliance Committee as Health Medical Field Representative. Interim term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 1st, 2024. The reappointment of Sherri Downing to a second term on the Helena Housing Authority as a Housing Commissioner. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on August 1st, 2027. The appointment of Brian Costigan to a first term of the pre-release screening committee as a community representative. Non-expiring term will begin upon appointment. Appointment of David Nielsen to a first term on the pre-release screening committee as a committee, community representative. Non-expiring term will begin upon appointment. And the reappointment of David Kim Wilson to a second term on the Helena Zoning Commission. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on September 30th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Is Copper still not around? Okay, we'll keep moving on until he gets here. Copper is very important to this meeting. Okay, consent agenda. We'll go, we want motion for these. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mayor, I recommend approval of the claims in the entire consent agenda.
Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I see no hands raised and no public comment online.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion and just provide the comment very briefly. This does include the setting the residential commercial wastewater base as new usage rates as well as the rates for the all City of Helena water systems, and we do not have any rate increases within those resolutions.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will move the consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Communications proposals from the commission? We'll move along. Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, I just wanted to put on the record tonight that on July 17th, the commission considered a record or a notice of or a resolution of intention to pass and set a public hearing on August 22nd or I'm sorry, set the public hearing for tonight. That public hearing has been moved to August 22nd, and the landowners in that lighting district 398 on Ridgewood Lane have been notified that the public hearing has been moved to August 22nd. I just wanted to make sure that was on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Report of the City Manager?
Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Moving along. Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Representative Bert Federman. You have the floor. Is he online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I don't see Mr. Federman online.
Okay, when he comes on, would you just let me know? Thank you. Regular items. Consider a right-of-way use permit for 2210 Dodge Avenue. Transportation Director Knopki and Engineer Mark Young. I guess we have Mr. Cooley is going to be representing. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
I know what you're all thinking, but no, Director Knopki did not have a major transformation over the weekend, which is our transportation engineer, Mark Young. He'll help you answer any more technical questions that you might have on these items, seeing as how the agenda is all us. So the first one for you is a right-of-way use permit for 2210 Dodge Avenue. The church has requested a sidewalk variance to forego the landscape boulevard requirement in city code and install new curbside sidewalks along Elm Street. If it's approved, they'd like to request that they be permitted to continue use of approximately five feet behind the sidewalk along Elm Street for the front of 11 parking spaces and buffer zones in the northeast parking lot. The, per city code, the space here would come with a fee attached to it, which would be about 5% of the fair market value of the property as determined by the most recent appraisal. And so using the parcel data, it was found that that 700 square foot right-of-way would result in about a $263.20 annual charge. The, so the church is requesting that they be permitted to continue to use the area directly behind the curbside sidewalk along Elm Street. And so if you've looked at any of the visuals or know the area at all there, you can see that there, the lines that they have painted in their parking lot stop a few feet short of where the curb is, but all of that area, including behind where the lines are painted, are right-of-way. And so they're currently using it now. And so they're requesting that when they do their renovations, that they be able to put in curbside sidewalks and still have the use of that right-of-way for their parking spaces is generally the long and short of it. And so as far as the advantages here, no noted advantages for the city. The church will be able to maintain their 11 parking spots. From a disadvantaged standpoint, aside from the lack of a boulevard, which goes to our complete streets, there's no other disadvantages that we'll note. At this point, we would say that the commission would either move to approve, table, or deny the request.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I guess, can you, so there are two, we have two items on, for this address. One of them is the right-of-use permit, and then the other is the sidewalk variance. And the sidewalk variance, they're requesting to not have to put in a boulevard. But if, and if they put in that boulevard, if we say that variance was denied, they had to put in the boulevard, they would lack those parking spaces. Is that accurate?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, so if they're, they're pretty well related, the two items are. So if you were to approve one, more than likely would make sense to approve the other, deny one, deny the other. I don't think that there would be enough space if we were to deny the variance and put the boulevard in for them to still have the use of the right-of-way.
Okay. Can I, oh, go ahead.
City Attorney Doctor, just for clarification, since we, three, what will be able to pass? Three, two, one, or?
Mayor, Commissioners, you would still need to pass three because that's the majority of the commission, three of the four.
Roger that. Thank you. Any other comments?
It's not the majority of the quorum? So two?
Mayor, Commissioners, the majority of the quorum, and the quorum would be three out of the four. So you're right, majority would be two out of the three. Yes. Thank you.
Continue, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I get, I guess, one, I know that previously there were some questions when this item has, not this specific item, this project has come before us, there were some conversations or public comment from some of the neighbors. What kind of public process happens when we get a variance request to the neighbors? And the reason I ask the question is if we, I mean, the, one of the reasons for boulevards is so there is snow storage when you're plowing, and it, you know, we included in the, staff included in some of the disadvantages, when you lose that snow storage, you're going to be getting more snow berms. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about neighbors who are already maybe less enthused having to deal with that as well, but do we have any information from neighbors or have they
So, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, with a sidewalk variance, because it's usually only for one specific property, there is no specific public process. If it was, say, like a subdivision where the subdivision is affecting all those properties around it, then we do have a public process to go with that, but, so with this one, there, we don't reach out to neighbors and say, hey, your neighbor doesn't want to put their sidewalk in because it's just on their property, or they want to put a curbside, so.
Okay.
Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, as it exists now, the church uses the parking spaces in the right-of-way, correct?
That's correct, Mayor and Commissioner Logan.
And so, in terms of, one of the downsides, as you read through the packet material, is the, the snow mater, handling of snow. So as it, as it stands now, what happens with snow on, let's say, Elm Street?
Mayor and Commissioners, so as of right now, yes, the, the majority of that snow is, I would imagine, bermed along the side of the road, but a lot of it is probably pushed up onto, if you, again, if you, if you look at the area, the paved portion that is where their parking lot is at, where their lines stop for the front of their parking spots, the rest of it, they're kind of using as a makeshift sidewalk. And so a lot of the snow gets pushed up onto that, which is not really a sidewalk at this point.
Sure. Okay. But in terms of usage on the, on the street, really with their proposal and what is currently happening, there'd be no significant changes. Is that accurate practically in terms of parking and?
So, no, Mayor and Commissioners, I mean, in terms of parking, there wouldn't be, if, if you were to approve the request, there wouldn't be a significant change to the way that things work now. Instead of it just being sort of an asphalt makeshift walkway, it would be an actual sidewalk. The snow would still be pushed up onto that sidewalk, and they'd be responsible for shoveling it. If it were to be a boulevard and then a sidewalk, they would more than likely probably lose some space in their parking lot, but then the snow would be able to be deposited up into that boulevard completely and out of the street and off of the sidewalk.
So if any snow, Mr. Mayor, sorry. If any snow does get piled up on the sidewalk, then, then the property owner is responsible for the removal of that?
Correct.
Accurate?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just add to Director Cooley's comments. So, the, the plow drivers right now, if they know that it's curbside sidewalk, they don't plow to the gutter. They plow two to three feet off that gutter so that the berm is in the road because we don't want to cover the sidewalk. Right now, like, like Chris said, it's not a sidewalk per se, it's a, it's pavement that is kind of designated as sidewalk. But normally, if, if it's boulevard, the plow operators will drive, will plow to the curb so the snow goes on the boulevard. If there's curbside sidewalk, they'll plow off the curb two or three feet so the berm goes in the road, which essentially narrows the roadway, you know, if there's parking next to that snow berm, so hopefully that was a little.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any public comments?
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Ben Tintinger. I'm a project architect with Mosaic Architecture for Helena First Church, and I just want to kind of give you a little history on this. Obviously, you know, we came in front of you before, we got the, a number of variances approved through the Board of Adjustment, and then we had the CUP approved in June for this project. This particular encroachment and variance comes back to streets, and so that's why it didn't go through Board of Adjustment, different process for this. Just to answer a few questions, snow plowing, they already do, they keep it off the, the walkway, they keep it off the street. They currently put it into one or two of the parking spaces on that parking lot. With the new improvements at the parking, we're going to have some landscape areas. So, yes, we don't have a boulevard, but we will have some landscape islands with trees and some space for snow removal. And likely, depending on, you know, the, the amount of snow, it, it will either be piled in a couple of parking spaces or taken off-site. Obviously, it can't be put on the sidewalk because you'd have to shovel it off, and it can't be put in the street because you'd have the same issue, the street-side parking, we'd lose. So, the bottom line for the request on this is so that we keep those 11 parking spaces out of the neighborhood. We're trying to get as many parking spaces as we can on-site. Currently, we have plenty of parking spaces with the cross-parking agreements that the church has with neighboring properties and the zoning rules that allow actually up to 900 feet from the church that, that folks can park as long as they have a public way. So we do have enough parking, but this will help keep the parking out of the neighborhood, and it'll basically keep it as it exists with the addition of a new sidewalk and, and additional landscaping that will happen there. So, do you have any further questions for me?
Thank you, sir. None for me. Any others? Go ahead. You look like the pastor, but I will leave it.
I have that pastoral look. I'm sorry. I'm Doug Greenman. I'm one of the pastors of the church, commissioners and mayor. Just to quickly answer your question, Emily, the, the complaints that we received from a couple neighbors weren't at all related to that issue or, or the parking, I mean, snow-related or anything like that. And, and this location is actually a distance away from those two neighbors that had their concerns.
Thank you, sir. Any final comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a right of, an exclusive right-of-way use permit for private parking along Elm Street right-of-way bordering the Helena First Assembly of God Church block property with a mailing address of 2210 Dodge Avenue with an annual fee of $263.20.
Second, and I have a comment if it's okay before we?
Yeah.
Okay. Just really briefly, I will support this. I think it's no surprise to, well, at least the staff and others, I'm not a huge fan of variances unless it's under really severe extenuating circumstances. I think that the applicants have identified a solution to ensure that they're not going to be dealing with snow that will be interfering with the traffic of the neighborhood and foot, foot traffic and the rest. I mean, I do think boulevards are a traffic calming measure and something that enhance neighborhoods to behave more safely, so I'm sad to see it go, but I, I also recognize that you're finding other solutions with more green space within the project, and I appreciate that. So I am a reluctant yes, but a yes nonetheless.
Thank you. Any other comments before we vote? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Thank you. We will move down to communications from Helena Citizens Council. Mr. Federman, I hear you on the line. You have the floor.
Can you hear me now, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor Council, I am Burton Federman. I was just appointed to the HCC, and today I have to read a few items that we like to bring before Mayor Commissioner. The daycare recommendation was unanimously approved and forwarded to the zoning commission meeting for August 9th. It increases the amounts of children in the three categories of childcare to be the same as the bill passed during the 2021 Montana Legislative Session. So they want to raise each of the ones by two or three to match the state. Citizens County Council is also interested in the feasibility of a citywide enforcement of ADA rules and regulations pertaining to handicap parking and sidewalk obstructions, enforcement to be provided by city code enforcement officers. This was just an introduction into it, and we tossed it around. We wanted to bring it up just to see if anyone had any interest. We also had questions, discussions concerning the ice skating rink in Memorial Park as to who has jurisdiction, does the city or the county for complaints that we get or any types of improvements. And we have a citizens council who has appointed a representative to the fire department planning committee. Their info has been forwarded to Chief Campbell, and citizens council is still interested in being a part of the city manager hiring committee. That's the end of my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Federman. Comments or questions for Mr. Federman? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, this may be more for the manager relative to the, the concern about the childcare alignment of our ordinance with state law. It sounds like there's a process in place that's going through the zoning commission for the 9th, if I understood that correctly. What, what happens from there? Mayor, Commissioner, I believe our next administrative meeting is the 17th. There's a process taking place internally right now with the Community Development Department. I would like them, those folks, to be able to report to you in line with the HCC recommendation and just give you a recap of everything that's in motion surrounding that issue at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Manager Burton.
Okay. Thank you. Moving along. We will stall and come back to you, but we have Copper. Copper is more important than your stuff right now, so we have Copper coming up, and we'll go back.
We have some history in the city attorney's office that there were questions.
Okay, we have Philu first, right?
Correct. Thank you, thank you for moving us.
Presentation. Resolution declaring police canine Philu to be surplus property and authorizing the transfer of ownership. And transfer of ownership to Corporal Josh Ray. Chief Petty, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. It's going to be loud. Thank you very much for accommodating. Let us come up here, so I'm going to, if I can, I'll try to introduce each individually here. They are, they are going to overrun me, so we'll see what happens. So tonight, I have two officers and their canine partners. For the first presentation, I'd like to present a resolution to the commission declaring police canine Philu surplus property and authorizing the transfer of ownership to Helena Police Corporal Josh Ray. Prior to having the commission vote on this resolution, I'd like to say a few words about Philu and Corporal Ray.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Corporal Josh Ray has been with the police department for 12 years, and for the last 10 years, Corporal Ray has had Philu as his trusted canine partner. Philu is a 10-year-old German Shepherd Malinois cross from Hungary. He was purchased from Southern Police Canine, Inc. in July of 2013. Since then, Philu has worked for the Helena Police Department assisting patrol and SWAT in numerous operations and suspect apprehensions. Philu has assisted multiple local and federal agencies around the state, has an explosive detection canine. Philu has had the ability to search many of the Montana State Bobcat football games, keeping fans safe down there as well. At home, he enjoys his one, his one rubber chew toy and his pool to cool off in. As you can tell, Philu loves his job, and he's always ready to work. Philu still has a drive, he always has, but unfortunately, with age and medical issues, he is ready to retire, unlike what you're seeing. he is ready to retire, unlike what you're seeing here. And at home, where he will be spoiled by the family. So, with that said, I would like to have the commission move to approve the resolution for Philu.
Thank you, Chief. Comments or questions from the commission?
I'd be that excited to retire, too.
I think that's the excitement of retirement, so quickly move this along. Madam, I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve a resolution declaring police canine Philu to be surplus property and authorizing the transfer of ownership to Corporal Josh Ray.
Second. As we moved and seconded, any final comments?
Thank you, and congratulations.
Any public comments? I see a lot of the kids here today. Y'all got anything you wanna say? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Philu, you are fully retired.
All right, Copper, hold on.
Okay.
Okay.
Introduction of new canine handler, Officer Jacob Skavone and his partner Copper.
Yep.
Chief.
Mayor Commission, thank you. This is merely a presentation. We just want to introduce our new canine and his handler. As Officer Skavone has found out, people are excited to see them, but when they get down to it, they're excited to see Copper, as he's found out. So, to introduce Copper and Officer Skavone, Copper is a one-and-a-half-year-old yellow lab despite his obvious copper color. He's a single-purpose drug-detection dog. When Copper is working and finding illegal drugs, he utilizes a passive alert. This means when he detects drugs, he alerts his handler by sitting rather than pawing. Copper currently is working a night shift from 8:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, but he is available all the time for call-out, except for commission meetings. Copper received his initial certification through Southern Police Canine in North Carolina and recently passed his yearly recertification with flying colors. He is very friendly and is happy to meet every and anyone. He loves his new job and is extremely excited to come to shift every day. The Helena Police Department believes Copper is an excellent addition to the City of Helena family and is ever vigilant in helping the Helena community combat dangerous drugs. Again, I'm just introducing Copper to the commission, and this is Copper and Officer Skavone.
Copper, welcome, officer. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Comments from the rest of the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to welcome Officer Skavone and his partner there. Thanks for your service, and just to give you one quick little story, and I hope the gentlemen out there hears this as well, but I was in the, I served in the fire department, and one of the roles that I had was participating in a firefighter honor guard, and I was a bag piper. And for some reason, I have no idea why, I was asked to do this, but there was a state gathering of canine dogs and their handlers at the Montana Law Enforcement Academy, and they asked me to play a tune out there. Again, why, I don't know, but it was ceremonial, so they thought the bag pipe would fit in very well, and I would, my memory would have me say there were about two dozen dogs, I think, and as soon as I started playing the bag pipe, you couldn't hear the bag pipe at all they started. It was much more dramatic than it was here tonight, but it was pretty cool, actually, to hear them all singing together. So, anyway, thank you guys again for coming in tonight and sharing your partners with us, so thanks.
Thank you. And let's welcome Copper. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, now we can get back to some boring business. All right, we will move along. Consider a sidewalk variance request for 1970 Piper Place. Deputy Director Kui and Engineer Young.
Thank you, Mayor. So, for this item, a variance request, sidewalk variance request for 1970 Piper Place, I will spare you the word by word, but just give you a little bit of background, as I believe Attorney Doctor has some either comments or some help for us on this one. So, I believe this was, there was originally a variance back in June of 2017 that granted a subdivision variance on this topic, but did not grant the owners-to-build aspect of that, which is a separate part of the code. And so, this request today is to address that piece, the owner-to-build part of the code. And I believe there are sidewalks on the south side of this area, but none on the north side. And with that, I'll leave it either to questions or if Attorney Doctor has anything to add, which is my favorite phrase to say of all our job title and name combinations.
Attorney Doctor, do you have anything?
Mayor Commissioners, yes, I just wanted to explain a little bit, just briefly, about the two pieces of the code that include sidewalk requirements. The first one being, as Mr. Kui just mentioned, during the subdivision process, subdivision regulations are required to include complete streets, planning, design, and construction toward complete streets. And as you know, complete streets include sidewalks, so they have to come with a sidewalk plan. At that point, if they ask for a variance, they get a variance for only that circumstance, unless they made it more broad to include a variance for the owners-to-build, which is another section of the code during the building portion of it that requires owners to build. It's much more specific about what is required by code to be included in the building portion of the sidewalks and streets that abut a property. That one then actually specifically allows for the city commission to grant a variance on location, and it does have some minor changes that can be approved by the city manager, but they're not applicable in this circumstance. So, that's why you see, again, the Piper Place request for a variance on this. We are trying to figure out how to make this a more cohesive process, but that takes time, and thankfully, city manager has made that part of a priority, and that will be something that we hope to have in the future. But until then, this is the process we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, the subdivision variance request was granted in 2017. What was the rationale at the time or the reason for the request, let's say?
So, if I might, Mayor.
Please.
Commissioners, I didn't include, well, actually, I don't remember. I think I might have included the minutes, or at least an excerpt from the minutes from 2017. But at the time, there was actually two requests from the developer. The first one was to, well, I don't know which was first or second. The first one, I believe, was to not put the sidewalks in, and the second one was to narrow the right-of-way width. Might have been the other way around. Kind of a chicken and an egg thing. But they granted the sidewalk variance to not install sidewalks on the north side, but they didn't grant the narrowing of the right-of-way width from 60 to 50 feet. And when asked at the time, let me see, I just quoted this for you. It says on page 16 of those minutes, Commissioner Halliday asked that if the street width was left at 60 feet, then what would happen to the extra footage? The city engineer Leland said that it would be there as right-of-way for future use, as is done everywhere else in the city. And then Commissioner Halliday asked to confirm that the drivable area will remain the same. No more asphalt would be needed. So, at the time, they kept the width so that it could be used for future use, which in this case would be for sidewalks, could be used for utilities, you know, water sewer or whatever, but yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I guess, can I follow up? So, I guess, what is the extenuating circumstance here that would result in granting a variance other than not wanting to have to put a sidewalk in?
So, I believe I put it in the owner's justification, but basically, on the corner, when you turn from the east-west portion of Piper Place and you go around the corner and head north, the sidewalk there would follow the road, which angles down. So, right, if you're heading south up to Piper Place, it's kind of a steeper grade, somewhere between 10 and 12%, I believe. And so, the sidewalk would be the same, which is allowed in our PROWAG guidelines for ADA in right-of-way. So, you could, you would go up the grade 10 or 12%, and as you turn the corner, depending on how you build the sidewalk, in the inside of that corner, it could be a little bit steeper grade, and then it would level out on the south portion. So, it's, as far as I understand, it's mostly that steep grade that they're saying is too steep, and I guess that's kind of an opinion that PROWAG allows it to be the same as the street, so. And I don't know if the applicant is here tonight to come onto it, but that's what I understand.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So, just one question. For the disadvantage, yeah, I see that there will be no pedestrian across, I mean, pedestrian access outside of, is there any right now? Pedestrian access?
No, there's no pedestrian access right now.
Thank you.
On either, either of the two lots on the north side of Piper Place.
Can I ask one more follow-up?
Please.
So, it looks like in our diagram, too, that it's, it's, there is anticipated development on the other side of the street as well, like lots available to be built on.
Correct. I believe that's, you know, what the subdivision, when they put the subdivision in, that was the intent, is be lots on both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any public comments? Oh, geez.
My name is Jeff Downhour. I'm with Mosaic Architecture. I'm the architect on the project, designing the home. And I'll add a little bit of clarification to that. The reason that wasn't originally granted was the steepness of the sidewalk. The road is 10% at the center line, but if you can imagine, you have a 60-foot radius gone down to about a 15-foot radius at the corner. The curb is already at 16 and 1/2%, and I included photos, I think, in your package. So, as you go into the sidewalk, it's gonna be over 20%. And I don't know, most people don't understand percentages. I hike Mount Helena. The power line trail is about 20%. To give you an example, Broadway Street, which is so dangerous already, is about 8%. So, you're 2 and 1/2 times steeper than Broadway or Sixth Avenue or the steepest streets in town. So, it's not a matter of being a little bit steeper or looking, you know, because ADA does allow, if you're following the existing contour, to be a little steeper than grade allows, but it's a lot steeper. ADA ramps are 1 in 12. ADA flare sidewalks on the sides, which is the steepest grade you're allowed, is 1 in 10. This would be 2 in 10, so over twice as steep as that. And if you're ever to try to fix that situation, you'd need a ton more space. It should have been allocated during the subdivision process if you're gonna require a sidewalk along that side of the street. And then the other side of the street, they did put in the sidewalk because it's the larger end of the curb, which allowed that sidewalk grade to be much shallower. And again, they don't actually, on the north side, they don't connect any other sidewalks for, I think it's about 10 blocks, almost all the way to Broadway, there are no other connecting sidewalks. So, I thought I'd give you a sense of what the grade means. So, I think we're looking at plus 20% grade if you were actually put that sidewalk in at the corner, which is difficult for anybody to walk up and extremely dangerous, so I thought you should be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, Mr. Mayor, follow up with a question for the city engineer?
Sure.
Transportation, sorry.
Take that from G.
No, don't worry. So, I guess with this, I mean, we're balancing risk. Is the grade of the sidewalk less dangerous than a kid walking in the road? That's how I'm evaluating this. I don't really know how else to do so, because that's why we have these standards in place. Are there other places in town where, you know, we do have, I mean, obviously, we have a lot of elevation all over town. What does this look like in other places where we do have sidewalks that obviously have to contend with the topography?
So, Mayor Commissioner Dean, actually, I believe the architect just gave a pretty good example. One of the steeper roads that we have in town with sidewalks on it is Broadway. So, I guess this is why it's, this is why we are where we are, because we, the code requires sidewalks everywhere, and so for instances like this, we want to let the applicant come and say, because of these reasons, we don't think we need sidewalks here. And so, I think your point is, okay, what are we weighing if we put sidewalks in versus not? Are there gonna be pedestrians here that will be walking on this side of the road and using other means, whether it's walking on the boulevard, if sidewalks aren't put in, on, whether it's grass or gravel or whatever, are they gonna be walking in the road? But, yeah, that's kind of where we are as far as why the question's being asked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, public comments?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, my name is Leonard Lantz, L-A-N-T-Z, and I live at 1970 Piper Place. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I guess one of the things that I would point out is I do believe that the road, walking on the road is safer than that angle of the sidewalk. And so, in terms of extenuating circumstances for granting a variance, I think it is very steep right there. There is a sidewalk across the street for the other lots, but there's no connecting sidewalks, and so in order to even get to that sidewalk, you can't reach it from another sidewalk. The other thing I would mention is that even with very good maintenance in the wintertime, I think this was gonna be a dangerous sidewalk, and because of that, there's this public safety risk, but there's also a liability risk that's created both for the homeowner and for the city in putting in a sidewalk that's dangerous. So, I would respectfully request the variance.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, when the public comment piece is through, just a question. Okay, thank you. Question maybe from Mr. Downhour. On the, on the grade, how does the grade of the sidewalk that would be on the south side or this, on this property compare with that of, you mentioned it briefly, but compare with that across the, with the sidewalk across the street?
Well, I didn't measure that. It's installed, but my guess is it's probably less than 5%. Because again, the arc of a, you know, that radius is quite large, just on the outside bend of the street, where you're traveling about 90 feet, and the same distance on the inside edge of the street, you're traveling about 10 feet. So, there's just an extreme difference when you're going on the inside of a radius versus the outside, you have a much broader way to travel. And the street is sloped a little bit, but it's relatively, you know, similar height on either side of the roadway. So, the outside is pretty comfortable to walk on. I've walked on it, but I didn't measure it, and it is, it's probably a normal sidewalk, I would say, probably less than 5%. But you could look at the old engineering drawings, but again, you're talking, you have a good 90 feet around the outside of that curve, where on the inside, you're basically making a really tight corner and almost raising the same amount, if that, if that kind of makes sense of how the street was built.
Yes, I see. Mr. Mayor, so I did take a drive up there, and it, you know, did seem significantly more... Mr. Mayor, um, so, so I did take a drive up there and it, you know, it did seem significantly more shallow on the, um, I guess it would be the south side of the loop. So would we be having a similar problem on the other property, on the other corner in the future?
Yes, you will. It'll be similar. I don't think it's quite, that road isn't quite as steep, but it's, it's close.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Okay, um, any other comments from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, give me one moment here, please. Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve a variance request not to install sidewalks adjacent to nineteen seventy Piper Place.
Can you repeat your motion?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve a variance request not to install sidewalks adjacent to nineteen seventy Piper Place.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just make a comment.
Please.
I am, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this variance. Um, I understand the, understand why they brought it. Um, I think that, you know, we, one thing we, we constantly hear is that we need, and it's included in our growth policy um, that went through extensive public comment over a year and a half. Um, that we need more connectivity within our, our neighborhoods, um, within the community. Um, obviously this, these are pretty busy neighborhoods. Um, I think that the, you know, shock and approach that, that has occurred over the last fifty years is what's resulted in, you know, a sidewalk here, not a sidewalk there. Which is why we have developed these standards for consistency for neighborhoods that are safe for kids to be walking and riding their bikes and, um, uh, I hope that, you know, other folks in the neighborhood will continue to take advantage of the programs that we've put in place to help install more sidewalks where there already is development. Um, but, and I, I, again, I do understand why, why the applicants brought, brought this, but I, I think that the, um, in my opinion, the safety of, of, you know, a kid walking on a sidewalk, even if it's steep, there's kids that walk all over the west side on steep roads, steep sidewalks. And I'd, I'd rather have them on a sidewalk than, than in a road, especially coming around a corner. So for the, those reasons, I will be a no.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? If not, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
No.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries two to one.
Thank you. Okay, where are we? Consider a sidewalk variance. Oh, that's, oh, okay. Consider a sidewalk variance request for twenty-two-ten Dodge Avenue, Director, nope, Deputy Director Kui and Engineer Young. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this item goes back to our first one again at twenty-two-ten Dodge Avenue. Uh, this is the actual sidewalk variance request. Um, so I think we, uh, discussed it pretty well at length, I think, on the first item. Uh, and so I won't go back over it again. But again, they're, they're planning their major addition and their remodel. Um, and with the approval of the, uh, exclusive right-of-way use, um, this variance request would, uh, allow them to, we've not put in the sidewalk then.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mayor. Uh, not, not to not put in the sidewalk, to put in a curbside sidewalk.
Right.
Sorry. That was.
I understood that.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I would just point out that, um, the variances for both streets, the north side and the east. So Dodge on the east and, uh, what's the other street? Elm, uh, no, not Elm. Oh, it is, I, it is Elm, actually.
Yeah.
So Elm on the north and Dodge on
Yeah.
East. So they'll put curbside sidewalks on both of those. And I believe on the other two sides, uh, they're planning, uh, boulevard sidewalks.
Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments?
Mayor and Commissioner, Ben Tintinger again, Mosaic Architecture. Just to clarify real quickly. Um, on Elm Street, the variance will just be for that east section. On the west section, uh, next to the building, we will have the typical, um, uh, boulevard and sidewalk. Um, it's just, again, to allow these parking spaces. And then along Dodge, um, that's an existing sidewalk that already is against the curb. And the reason we're asking for that variance is so that we don't have to, uh, dig up mature landscaping that's already in place. Um, so, um, it'll just remain as it has for how many ever years? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Question. Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Tintinger. Um, are you replacing the sidewalk on Dodge then? Like, is that coming up and getting, or is it just remaining as is?
It's remaining as is unless, uh, we haven't been out there to actually inspect it to see if there's bad sections. If there's bad sections, we'll replace those.
Those sections.
But I think it's all in pretty good shape.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve a sidewalk variance request for curbside installation along Elm Street and Dodge Avenue bordering the Helena First Assembly of God Church block property with a mailing address of twenty-two-ten Dodge Avenue.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Thank you. Consider a sidewalk variance request for three forty-seven Clancy Street. Deputy Director Kui and Engineer Young, you have the floor.
Mayor, I'm going to let Mark do this one. This one's a little more technical. It goes back to the grade questions.
If you don't understand, you want us to understand? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, um, so hopefully the memo, uh, has explained it well. But I, I just wanted to point out that the, on this property, the, the plans that have been submitted, they have driveway, two different driveways, um, at two different elevations because it goes up, up the street, which is up the hill. And so it's kind of one of those, if, if they don't put sidewalks in now, they, they mentioned in their application they're willing to do in the future. I just don't know, I, I didn't engineer their plan, so I don't know how that would work going across both those driveways and, and the slope in between them. But, um, I would assume that it would match somewhat similar to the road slope and, and we could give, if, if the sidewalks were to go in, we could give them the grades of the future roads so that they could match to that grade as it says in the, uh, Pro-WAG guidelines, so. Um, hopefully that was, offered a little more clarity, but if not, please feel free to ask any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So, and I, they mentioned this in the application, but, so have, they have already waived their right to protest any special improvement district? Or would that need to be included in a motion here?
So they just put that in their application, so I would, if, if you want, were going to approve this, I would think you would want to include that in the motion.
Okay.
And then we would have the Attorney's Office follow up with getting every, all the paperwork straight.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Well, I guess I do just have one follow-up. I know we've been talking a lot about, you know, what roads we're improving when, all part of our CCIP conversation. Um, do we have any idea where this would fall within those, uh, needs?
So I don't know if the manager wants to speak to it, but my, my assumption is, um, because of the lower traffic on this road, it's going to be much further down the road than, say, our five-year plan.
Okay.
But that's, that's kind of, speaking off the cuff, I don't know if that's,
Okay.
That's my understanding of, of our CC, our CCIP plan right now.
All right. Any other comments from the commission? Public comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak here. Uh, my name's Ryan Wilkinson. I am the owner of the new construction project at three forty-seven Clancy Street. Uh, Tony Van Dort is our site superintendent with Golden Eagle, who is in charge of the project. Um, as we've kind of outlay, outlined here before, um, this is a very difficult spot to install one section of sidewalk. Uh, it's a very steep street, um, previous to what has been noted before. It will end up at a, about a twenty percent grade, which is extremely steep. Uh, but the real issue is that's going to create the lowest spot on the street. Uh, and it's already not really set up for good drainage and snow removal. And so the sidewalk will basically be the only section in the middle of the hill by itself. And it will be about two to three feet lower than anything else, uh, adjacent to it. So, uh, in our opinion, it also creates a, a liability, um, and it's not walkable, which to me is the, kind of the spirit of this, this, um, rule is to make Helena more walkable. Um, this is a two-driveway section in the middle of a hill. Uh, it's going to end at a three-foot berm on both sides. So in my opinion, that's very dangerous if someone thinks they're going to be walking down the grass and all of a sudden drop three feet onto a section of sidewalk out in the middle of nowhere. Um, the other, you know, big concern is that because this is the, going to be the lowest part of the street, that all the rain, snow runoff is going to end up in the sidewalk. Wash it out, make it extremely difficult to maintain in the wintertime. Um, and we're afraid that we're going to spend, th- this is going to be like probably four times the cost of a normal sidewalk because the power pole was not buried deep enough in the right-of-way to accommodate a sidewalk. Um, I had talked to the Public Service Commission about whether that was our responsibility. Um, they were a little bit vague, but said basically like, they put the power poles in at that time, that's what they are. So because of this sidewalk, we are basically going to be required to replace an extremely old power pole, rebury power to at least two to three of our neighbors, and then end up with a chunk of sidewalk in the middle of a steep hill that's probably not really walkable anyway. Um, so we're not anti-sidewalk at all. We've already replaced two sidewalks at two other homes over the twenty-five years that we've lived here. Uh, we'd just like to defer this until we can figure out a grade from top to bottom and match everybody together. Um, we would even be willing, I know there was no advantage listed to the city, but we are willing to put money into an SID to fund this, and even if it takes five or ten years, whatever, that can sit there and grow interest. And we're happy to get that going. We've already talked to our neighbors. They're very willing to participate. They would also like pavement and sidewalks there, even though it would be steep. I think it's doable. Um, but one section in the middle of what we currently have is, seems dangerous and quite frankly, I don't think it will last, so.
How many neighbors do you have, sir?
Uh, to the, let's see, to the, uh, west, there are three homes. And to the east, there's only one. They have, uh, no sidewalk, but blacktop and a curb, which we're willing to do.
And that's the area you're talking about?
That's the lower part. That's the one below us. Uh, that's blacktop and a curb to where we stop. Above us is gutter, like big ditch with gutters and gravel, uh, excuse me. Um, and so we're willing to match either one of those, which seems practical and, and doable for, for the situation. Um, but, you know, putting a sidewalk that doesn't match either one and having that real steep drop-off to each one seems, you know, really impractical.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my comment.
Comments or questions from the commission? Any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Tony Van Dort. I'm residential site superintendent for Golden Eagle Construction. I'm in charge of this, the build here at their house, at, at their address. Um, a couple of other, other things that I'll just add to what, what Ryan had to say is, um, I don't know if, if any of you have been up there, but on the side of their, of their, where their build is, there are a, a lot of different elevations. And, um, for us to figure out where to put this sidewalk would be a, a challenge. And the other thing I would like to say is, um, that big rain we just had a month ago or so, um, washed out the ditches and, I mean, literally gravel ran all the way down the street and down Rodney. If we would have had the sidewalk and curb in like it's required, it would have undermined that and we would have had to redo it. And so if we were to put this in now and be the only one in there, there's a good chance that it would have to be redone again. And then if that is the case, then who pays? Is it my client? Is it the city? Who's going to pay for all of that? And then I think Ryan alluded to some of the additional costs that he's going to have to do by being the only one that puts this in. And I, I mean, it's in the tens of thousands of dollars. And at, if, if they're willing to put this money up and then the, the, the whole street gets done at once, I, I, that would make a lot more sense to me.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a com, uh, question for the city attorney. Um, so if I were to make a motion to approve with the condition that the property owner waives the right to protest a special improvement district, does that meet the needs that we've discussed to ensure that a sidewalk is put in when the street is upgraded?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, yes, it does sound like it, it would address the situation that you're talking about. And actually, the landowner has mentioned being willing to do that.
Right.
Um, and as I think, um, Engineer Young mentioned, uh, we could work with the landowners to, to make sure there's an agreement in place for that.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will move to, uh, approve, I will move to conditionally approve and with the condition that the property owner waive their right to protest any future special improvement district um, for a sidewalk variance of, for the installation of concrete sidewalks at three-four-seven Clancy Street.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the commission?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, may I just clarify the motion?
Please.
That it's clear that the, um, that the waiver to protest would be for an SID for sidewalks for the street.
I think it would be the street upgrade.
Okay.
Is that, would that be correct?
Mayor and Commissioners, it would be, uh, just at any time if their property were to fall into an SID that were going to be created.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. No finer discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Thank you. Consider a sidewalk variance request for the Capitol Hill Town Center. Deputy Director Kui and Transportation Engineer Young, you have the floor.
You're almost done with me, Mayor, I promise.
Oh, I'm ready.
Mayor and Commissioners, so, uh, this next sidewalk variance request, uh, is for the Capitol Hill Town Center. Um, the, uh, the developer is requesting a, a sidewalk placement variance to locate the sidewalk along the southeastern portion of Oak Street, eight feet from the property line as opposed to the one-foot requirement in city code. Um, the result of that just means that the landscaped boulevard, uh, would be cut down to four foot instead of the seven-foot width that is in city code currently. Um, we won't go too much into the needs for them. I do believe, uh, Greg is here. I do believe Greg is here, or maybe online, he may be online. I know he intended to, to attend the meeting, so if he's on, we'll let him explain his viewpoint of it. But I do believe that is sort of the root issue with this variance request, is that distance.
Thank you. Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Mr. Worth, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Greg Worth with Staley Engineering. I'd like to thank Mr. Kui for presenting the information. So, this variance request is to allow a sidewalk modification along Jorgensen's property, and it's to match the existing parking lot elevations, the, adjacent to their motel building, which is currently lower than Eleventh Avenue. So, when we design Oak Street, the engineering standards dictate that we table the intersection for site distances and ADA compliance, and this entailed raising some of the elevation, so we could create that tabling and then do the longitudinal grade on Oak Street. So, the sidewalk placement we determined was an appropriate mitigation measure, is we move the sidewalk to allow some additional area for, do some earthwork embankment, sloping to match the existing grades. We are proposing the sidewalk to have the minimum four-foot wide boulevard, but the, by moving it with, to the four-foot boulevard, we were able to promote the, provide the full ADA compliance, avoid steep slopes, and then this will provide the, that eight-foot will allow for a nice landscape slope transition from the sidewalk, the new sidewalk down to the existing parking lot grade for the Jorgensens. So, the sloped sidewalk prevents the need of a retaining wall, which becomes a hazard and liability in the public right-of-way, and typically avoided in any type of public right-of-ways like this, instances. So, the plans have been approved by the city in May. On the project, utility construction is in progress, and, you know, Benefits has received building permits, Opportunities received building permits, so a lot of activity on the site. So, this is a, kind of a housekeeping measure to keep the project moving forward. So, we request approval, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worth. Any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Worth, I do just have a quick question, so just to make sure that I'm clear. The four, the four-foot boulevard is not for the whole length of the street, it's just for the upper, upper part, or the...
Southeast.
So, okay.
That is correct. We've narrowed the, the boulevard to be four feet, only in the instances where we need to, to mitigate the sloping elevation difference requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Any other public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would move to approve the sidewalk placement variance request to locate the sidewalk along the southeastern portion of Oak Street, south of Eleventh Avenue, eight feet from the property line, instead of one foot, as required by the city code.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Kui, Director Kui, you're excused.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have anybody online?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have no hands raised online, and I see no written public comment.
Any finer comments from the commission? This meeting is adjourned.